Five thirty-three. Okay, all right.
Chairman, this is Ken Nguyen. I may have to leave early today because my friend just passed away yesterday to help to make arrangements for this hero, so I may leave early. I will try to stay as long as possible until the finish of this meeting.
That's quite all right. Ken, you do what you have to do and we understand. And so, you know, just note when you're leaving and then we can take care of it from the record's perspective.
All right, I will do that. Thank you.
All right. Madam Secretary, why don't we start the meeting at this point in time?
Okay, it is now five thirty-four. And recording has begun.
Okay. I would like to call this regular planning commission meeting of September twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty to order. Vince, will you lead us in the pledge allegiance?
Yes.
Yes, sir. Right, right hand of your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag. United States of America.
United States of America.
To the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God.
Under God.
The visible.
The visible.
Liberty and justice for all.
Liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Vince. Appreciate that. Madam Secretary, please call roll.
Okay, roll call. Commissioner Garcia. Commissioner Morrissey. Commissioner Morrissey.
Here.
Commissioner Nguyen.
Here.
Commissioner Fan. Commissioner Rivera.
Here.
Vice Chair Contreras Leo.
Here.
And Chair McLaughlin.
Here.
Chair, you have quorum.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. I would now invite the commission secretary to describe the way the public can access this virtual meeting.
Thank you, Chair. This meeting is being livestreamed via YouTube at www.youtube.com/cityofsantaanna-video/live and to our website at www.santa-anna.org/CC/city-meetings. While the meeting is in progress, the public may provide a comment by phone. To comment by phone, please dial one six six nine nine zero zero nine one two eight. Enter meeting ID three one five nine six five one four nine, followed by the pound sign. When prompted for a participant ID, just enter pound. When the item that you would like to comment on is being discussed, please dial star nine. When the comment period is opened, I will call on you by the last three numbers listed on the caller ID. After you are called upon, you must press star six to unmute yourself. After you have unmuted yourself, please state your name, your position on the matter, and your comment. You will have three minutes. I will alert you when your time is up. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. We're going to move on to public comments on non-agenda items. Madam Secretary, does anyone wish to speak at this time on any non-agenda items?
If you would like to make a comment on a non-agenda item, please dial star nine now. I'll wait a few seconds. Chair, no one has indicated that they would like to make a comment on a non-agenda item.
Okay, given that there are no public comments at this point in time on non-agenda items, we will close the public comments at this point and move on to the consent calendar. The first item on the consent calendar, I'd like to have a motion on the minutes from the September fourteenth, two thousand and twenty, planning commission meeting. Do we have a motion?
Don't move.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll abstain.
You'll abstain.
Perfect. I was refused myself from one of the items.
Commissioner Morrissey.
Okay, so, I'm sorry.
That was previous. That was a steady session.
Yes, there is no need.
So you can second the motion.
I'll second the motion.
At this point. Okay, thank you, Mr. Commissioner Morrissey. We have a motion and a second. Madam Secretary, would you do a roll call, please?
Yes, roll call vote on item A. Commissioner Garcia. Commissioner Morrissey.
Aye.
Commissioner Nguyen.
Aye.
Commissioner Fan.
Aye.
Commissioner Rivera.
Aye.
Vice Chair Contreras Leo.
Aye.
And Chair McLaughlin.
Aye.
Motion passes six-zero with Commissioner Garcia absent.
Okay, so at this point in time, do we have a motion to approve Commissioner Garcia's absence? Do we have a motion?
Don't move.
Second.
Thank you.
Second.
Okay, and then second? Second, uh...
Cynthia.
Cynthia Contreras, yes, thank you. All right. Madam Secretary, please do a roll.
Roll call vote on item B. Commissioner Morrissey.
Aye.
Commissioner Nguyen.
Aye.
Commissioner Fan.
Aye.
Commissioner Rivera.
Aye.
Vice Chair Contreras Leo.
Aye.
Chair McLaughlin.
Aye.
Motion passes six-zero with Commissioner Garcia absent.
Okay, thank you, Madam Secretary. With that, we will close the consent calendar and move on to the business calendar. Regarding the public hearings, I'd like to follow, I'd like to talk about the following protocol. I will now review the process for public hearings so that everyone knows what to expect. Staff will present a presentation and answer questions from the commission. The public hearing will then be opened. The applicant will be given the opportunity to speak, limited to fifteen minutes. Members of the public will be given the opportunity to comment, limited to five, uh, to three minutes. The applicant will be given the opportunity to respond to the comments made by the public, limited to five minutes. The public hearing will then be closed. Discussion will return to the commission with formal action taken to approve, conditionally approve, deny, or continue review of the application. Please consider the following suggestions when organizing your comments. Please state your name and address. Please state whether or not you support, oppose, or are neutral to the proposal. Your statement should be, should include all pertinent facts within your knowledge. Avoid gossip, emotion, and repetition. A clear and concise, non-repetitive argument is most effective. Having said that, we will now move on to item number one. And please, at this time, please consider item number one, conditional use permit twenty-two thousand and seventeen and variance number twenty-two thousand and dash oh-three for the property located at sixteen nineteen, sixteen twenty-one, and sixteen twenty-three, East Edinger. Please note the decision on this matter is final unless appealed within ten days. Before we begin, do any of the commissioners have anything they wish to disclose with regards to this item? Commissioner Morrissey? Not for me, thank you. Commissioner Nguyen? Not, not for me, thank you. Commissioner Rivera? No, none. Commissioner Fan?
None.
Vice Chair Contreras Leo?
I don't.
I have, I have nothing disclosed at this point in time. Okay. Jerry, it's your presentation.
Yes, good evening, Chairman and Commissioner. Can everyone hear me?
Yes, we can.
So this first item is a request by Concentra Health Services for an approval of a conditional use permit to allow an existing industrial medical clinic to be expanded, as well as for a variance to allow a reduction in the required occupancy for the property located at nineteen sixteen, nineteen twenty-one, and nineteen twenty-three, East Edinger Avenue. Next slide. The applicant is requesting approval of a CUP and a variance to expand the existing medical clinic and facilitate some tenant spaces. Some minor improvements that would be constructed as part of the project does include some new interior partition walls, as well as the construction of new ADA compliant restrooms. In addition to the interior improvements, the applicant is proposing to also conduct exterior improvements consisting of restructuring the existing parking lot, construction of a new trash enclosure, as well as construction of new landscaping. Next slide. This project was originally presented to the commission on August twenty-fourth and was continued by the commission in order to allow the applicant to address some additional exterior improvements that were requested by the commission, as well as to address concerns with regard to lighting and parking. Next slide. Since the last meeting, the applicant has worked with staff to identify additional areas of improvement. This is the proposed landscape plan that has been revised. The applicant, in addition to the five-foot landscape strip along Edinger Avenue, is now proposing a three-foot landscape planter along the west elevations of the building. In addition, as mentioned during the last meeting, the commission, they had some concerns with regards to the landscaping building, and the applicant is also proposing to add some landscape plots along the entrances of the different tenant suites. Next slide. This is a proposed rendering of the, depicting the current building, as well as the proposed landscaping improvements. As mentioned previously in the last meeting, the applicant is proposing a five-foot wide landscape strip along a deep frontage of Edinger, which is pretty much being showcased towards the right of the slide. In addition to the new shrubbery that will be added, the applicant will be installing four trees along the frontage. To the left, along the west elevation, you can see the proposed three-foot landscape planter along that west elevation. In addition to that, the applicant is proposing to install some trellises with climbing vines. Next slide. To address the lighting and parking concerns raised by the commission, additional conditions of approval have been added to the project, which include requiring the middle of a photometric plant in accordance with the city's building security ordinance, which is pretty much a standard requirement for these type of projects. The photometric plant will be need to be reviewed by the planning building agency, as well as the police department. In addition to that, staff is proposing a condition to limit the number of employees at a given time to thirteen. This will ensure that there will be, at a minimum, twenty-seven parking spaces available for the patrons of the facility. In addition to that, the applicant has agreed, should there be a parking issue, they would refer their patients to some of their nearby facilities. And lastly, to ensure that the project would not deviate from the planned operation, a condition of approval has been added to review the project within six months of the date of issuing of the certificate of occupancy. Next slide. With that, staff recommends that the planning commission approve conditional use permit number twenty-two thousand and dash seventeen and variance number twenty-two thousand and dash zero-three as condition. That concludes staff's presentation, and I'm here to answer any questions the commission may have. In addition, the applicant is also in attendance.
Thank you, Jerry. Let's start with Commissioner Morrissey. Do you have any questions of Jerry to ask? No, no questions this time. Okay. Commissioner Nguyen?
No question, thank you.
Commissioner Rivera?
Yeah, quick question. As far as the landscaping, it looks really good. My only question is, as far as the trees off of, off of Edinger, are those going to be mature trees? Or how are we going about that process?
Commissioner Rivera, those trees are usually twenty-four-inch box trees, but we could certainly add a requirement to be mature trees if you like.
Okay, yeah, I was thinking possibly something maybe matured, just depending on, I mean, how big it is. It looks good in the pictures, but I know that probably takes a very long time. And sometimes, you know, the renderings look great and we get these, you know, trees that are very small. So that would be good to see if we can do something, maybe something a little bit more mature, a little bit bigger. But it looks great, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Rivera. Commissioner Fan?
Hi, thank you. My question is regarding, we talked about, you know, them, the applicant, I guess, directing patients to other locations. What is the mechanism for, and I may have missed this, but what is the mechanism for ensuring that, you know, that they're, how are they keeping track of that? Because, you know, I know that if I'm a patient and obviously this is urgent care, I'm going to just find parking somewhere, right? Like, and it's not as though you're inside the medical office that you'll know that I parked across the street or down the block, or whatever the other situation may be.
Commissioner Fan, the applicant could probably better explain this, but as part of the parking analysis that was conducted for the project, there is no issues in terms of there being a lack of parking. Some of the commissioners, they raised some concerns of the possibility of it potentially having some impacts to the adjacent uses. With that, we did modify the parking management, or parking analysis plan to include a parking management. Because that the applicant indicates there is an issue with regards to parking, they would defer their patients to other nearby facilities.
Right, but I understand, the study shows that it doesn't have an issue. But the point of having the condition is that if there is an issue, that it is addressed adequately and properly. But I just want to know what mechanism that actually is in the event there is an issue, right? Like, or else there's no point in having a condition that doesn't have any effect. So maybe I'll wait for the applicant, and they can better tell that to me.
Yeah, and I could still want to elaborate, that's something that we would definitely have to monitor from a staff perspective, which is why we included that six-month review period as well. But yeah, it would be something that staff would have to constantly monitor between planning, as well as court enforcement.
Would the review period include, I guess, outreach to neighboring businesses? Talking to them, making sure that, you know, getting their input? Because they're the ones most affected, right?
Commissioner Fan, yes, we will include that as part of our review.
Great, thank you. But that's all for now.
Vice Chair Contreras Leo, do you have any questions at this time?
I do not.
Okay. I don't have any questions, Jerry, at this time, so thank you very much for the presentation. And at this point, Madam Secretary, have you received any additional written comments since this last time this matter was discussed?
No additional comments were received since the last time this item was agendized.
Thank you. We will now open the public hearing. Would the applicant like to speak on this matter? Please identify yourself.
Just one moment here, we're going to unmute her, Lisa. Please, Lisa, we have unmuted you. Please dial star six and begin speaking. Lisa, please dial star six to unmute yourself.
Okay, I apologize. I unmuted.
Thank you.
This is Lisa Stewart. This is Lisa Stewart, I'm the representative for Concentra. And I wanted to start off by thanking Jerry and our team for all the hard work that went into this application. And I want to thank the entire planning commissioning team for your consideration. We at Concentra feel that we add employment, as well as medical services, to the community. And we sincerely hope that the commission approves our request, so that we can expand into this center space, so to improve our functionality and our flow for our patients as well as our staff. I know that there was a question regarding diverting patients to our two neighboring clinics. And what I did, I wanted to address that, and I will gladly take questions. I would say that we, we typically have a certain percentage of patients at each one of our centers, and it is our standard practice that once we reach that threshold, that we do divert to a neighboring clinic. And we do not have a lobby overflowing with patients, a parking lot overflowing with cars. And certainly, we will then cripple ourselves on getting our patients to do care. So it is standard practice for us to divert, and we can't draft a letter to anybody. We will choose the requirements. And that is all I have.
Okay, thank you for the, thank you for that comment. Madam Secretary, do we have anyone else who would like to speak at this point in time?
Chair, I will go ahead and ask for callers to press star nine if they'd like to speak on this item. I'll wait a few moments. We don't have any speakers, Chair. And just for the record, I'd like to announce that Commissioner Garcia has joined the meeting.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, so there's no, no one else has any comments from the public hearing. We'll now close the public hearing, and we'll come, bring it back to the commission. At this point in time, does the commission have any questions of the applicant and/or staff? We'll start with Commissioner Morrissey. Commissioner Morrissey?
I'm sorry, I was muted, so I'm muted now. I'd like to thank staff for the efforts that put forward on this, and the applicant as well, addressing all our concerns. Seems like all or most of them were addressed. The landscaping and limiting the amount of employees and providing what appears to be adequate spaces for the patients or guests. So glad to see this was worked out. With regards to the trees at the front, not sure how much space is there in terms of fitting a thirty-six-inch box, but we'd have to, we can see how big that parkway is there. But yeah, I'd absolutely like to be able to get the biggest tree possible in there as well. Those are my comments. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Morrissey. Commissioner Nguyen, do you have any comments or questions of the applicant?
No questions, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Rivera?
Yeah, similar comments, just thanks for addressing those concerns we had on the last meeting. And I think most of the, most of the stuff we, we had concerns about, or raised concerns about, seems like, like they have been addressed. And then following along also, you know, whatever, as big as you can get the trees that were, that are able to fit, if the box, if your twenty-four-inch box is the biggest you can do, then that works. I was just trying to think, you know, any way possible, if we could be bigger, then that'd be great. If not, then twenty-four is good, if it could be thirty-six, that'd be great too. But other than that, no questions, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Rivera. Commissioner Fan?
Um, no questions, but with the applicant answered my concern with how they are going to monitor, which I'm really glad to know, and I am very appreciative of, you know, of the applicant for addressing these issues. And definitely with the landscaping plan, that's been an issue that we've had before. And they look right, so that's all that comes out, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Fan. Vice Chair Contreras Leo, any questions?
No, just a comment. I want to thank, first of all, the applicant for being so responsive and following through with staff. And thank you to staff as well for working with the applicant to address all the issues. And I know it got a little frustrating last time, but it looks great, and I'm appreciative of the, of your responsiveness to the project. Thank you to both of you.
Okay, and I have no, I have no questions of either the applicant or staff at this point in time, again. But I, to echo what Vice Chair Contreras Leo said, you know, I appreciate everybody having patience, and more importantly, making sure that we came to a reasonable and understandable solution that was hopefully, in the long run, going to be very, makes the whole property and its, and the building and its occupants a lot more appreciative of what we've got in this facility. Thank you for your support from the applicant. We appreciate you working with all of us. And with that said, let's move on to, if there's no further comments or concerns, I'd like to have a motion on this item.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to motion to approve conditional use permit number two-zero-two-zero-dash-at-condition and approve number two-zero-two-zero-dash-zero-three at condition. Thank you, Ken, we have a second.
This is Commissioner Rivera.
Hey, thank you. All right, so we have a motion, we have a second. No further comments or questions on anybody's behalf?
No.
Hearing then, Madam Secretary, will you please call roll?
Yes.
Roll call vote.
Roll call vote for item number one. Commissioner Garcia.
Aye.
Commissioner Morrissey.
Aye.
Commissioner Nguyen.
Aye.
Commissioner Rivera.
Aye.
Commissioner Fan.
Aye.
Vice Chair Contreras Leo.
Aye.
Chair McLaughlin.
Aye.
Motion passes by unanimous consent.
Thank you very much, everybody, I appreciate that. We will now move on to the second item. Thank you very much, everybody, I appreciate that. Uh, we will now move on to the second item. Hold on, my, uh, this is the time and place to consider item number two. Density bonus, bonus agreement, application number twenty twenty dash oh one. Site plan review number twenty twenty dash oh one. Site plan review number twenty twenty dash oh two. Variance number twenty twenty dash oh five. And tentative parcel map number twenty twenty dash oh two, dash oh three for the property located at two zero one West Third Street. Please note the decision on the variance and tentative parcel map and corresponding addendum to the environmental impact report is final unless appealed within ten days. Recommendations on the site plan, density bonus agreement, and corresponding, uh, addendum to the environmental impact report will be forwarded to the city council at a date, no later, uh, at a later date for a final determination. Before we begin, do any of the commissioners have anything that they wish to disclose with regards to this item? Uh, Commissioner Garcia?
No.
Commissioner Morrissey?
Uh, yes, I had previously, uh, recused myself, um, due to the possible perception of conflict of interest, but after consulting with the attorney, determined there was actually no conflict, so, I, I will be able to, uh, consider this item, or these items.
Thank you, thank you, Commissioner Morrissey. Uh, Commissioner Nguyen?
No, I have nothing to disclose, thank you.
Commissioner Rivera?
Nothing to disclose.
Commissioner Fan?
Hi, yes, uh, consistent with, um, the last meeting, I will have to recuse myself as my employer, Lieutenant Mucker, represents the applicant, uh, for many years, and so I will now leave the room and turn off the mic. Someone please let me make way to come back.
Thanks, thank you, Commissioner Fan. Commissioner Rivera? Uh, I've already disclosed on. Oh, sorry. Um, Vice Chair Contreras Leo?
Have nothing, thank you.
And I myself have nothing, so, having said that, um, Selena, it's your turn to present.
Thank you, good evening, commissioners. Tonight, you have four actions before you related to the development project at two zero one West Third Three, Third Street. It's a mixed-use development project located in the downtown transit zoning code and downtown district center general plan, uh, land use designation. It's an approximately one and a half acre site located within close proximity to retail shops, restaurants, government buildings, employment centers, and birch park. It's also within close proximity of the future Orange County Streetcar, which is currently under construction and will be operational in the year twenty twenty-two. This will have connections to the, uh, Santa Ana Regional Transportation Center with, with access to Amtrak and MetroLink service and Orange, uh, OCTA bus routes. Here you can see some site photos of the existing conditions, which include an existing three-level parking structure, which has approximately four hundred and forty, uh, parking spaces for both hourly and monthly public parking. This parking structure was constructed in the early nineteen eighties and is in need of repairs. In two thousand fourteen, the Planning and Building Agency released a request for qualifications, which included, uh, shared public and, which, uh, listed specifications for, including shared public and private parking, to reconnect Sycamore Street to Third and Fourth Streets, to provide exceptional architecture and specifying, uh, wanted uses. In response, five proposals were received, and only one included a hotel component. In two thousand sixteen, the Community Development Agency entered into an exclusive negotiation agreement with Caribou Industries, and has, um, brought, was brought forth the project that is before you tonight. That includes demolition of the existing public parking structure and construction of two hundred and eleven public parking spaces, along with the hundred and seventy-one multifamily units, including nineteen very low-income units, approximately thirteen thousand square feet of ground-floor commercial uses, a seventy-five-room hotel, and reconstruction of Sycamore Street. So here you can see an image of the site plan, which depicts, um, the project details that I just went over. So it'll be constructed within two buildings. On the west side, outlined in red, is the mixed-use building, which includes the hundred and seventy-one residential units, thirteen thousand square feet of commercial space, and four hundred and forty parking spaces. Act, vehicular access to the project site will be taken from the alley just north of the project, with the arrows shown in blue. Then moving east, you'll see with the blue arrow that Sycamore Street will be reconstructed. A new valet parking, uh, drop-off zone will be located adjacent to the hotel. The hotel building is outlined in blue, which is the seventy-five-room hotel with forty-six mechanical parking lifts and, uh, parking spaces. And here you can see a cross-section of the buildings. This basically is, uh, cutting the buildings in half what you would see here, so it demonstrates the building heights and each component of the building. Starting with the mixed-use building, which is on the left, um, you'll see that it's comprised of two elements, mainly public parking and residential units. Taking a closer look at, or mainly parking, I should say, and residential units, now taking a closer look at the parking, that's the area that's outlined in red. The levels that are shaded in light red are the levels that would be the two hundred and eleven public parking spaces, along with thirty-four reserved hotel valet parking spaces. The shaded levels in green are the residential parking spaces for a total of a hundred and ninety-six residential spaces. And then you'll see the bulk of the residential units begin on levels nine and above. Um, and that comprises the most, the rest of the building with penthouse-level units and a roof deck that overlooks downtown. The, uh, subterranean parking level will span the entire project site and be reconstructed underneath, um, Sycamore Street. This will be utilized for, uh, public and hotel valet parking. And then moving to the east for the hotel building, you'll see the two-story level lobby, the hotel parking lifts in the shaded area that's blue, and then the hotel units that start on levels two and above. And here you can just see a rendering of the mixed-use building and a view from Third Street looking northeast. The building is proposed to be a California contemporary architectural style, which is one of the four architectural styles permitted for the line-block building type. Here you can see a close-up of the corner of Third and Broadway and the, uh, building elevations. This includes tan masonry brick, punched windows, recessed storefronts and display windows, the use of bulkheads and transom windows, uh, wall art, and a plaza with statement tree at the corner. This here is, um, a detailed elevation of what you can see, we took into account the nearby and adjacent buildings. This is, um, on the bottom left, you can see the building to the north of the project site. It's an existing four-story masonry brick building, and the massing of the lower level of the mixed-use building lines up with the height of this building. To the bottom right is the building across the street to the south. It's a two-story, story masonry brick building with dark bronze storefronts, transom windows, bulkheads, and recessed entries. Here you can see the plan view of the building elevations, and at the bottom right is a close-up of those details that were, um, found on the nearby adjacent buildings. This includes the transom windows, the bulkheads, and recessed storefronts. Moving on, you can see a rendering from, um, Third Street looking north uh, on what would be the new Sycamore Street. This could be, um, closed with proper permits for use of special events. And here you can see the, uh, a rendering of the hotel building, looking from Third Street Northwest. Again, a contemporary design, ten-story building, which includes, uh, ACM metal panels, bronze windows, and marble finishes. As part of the project, the applicant will be, uh, providing public parking spaces. This is provided on levels, the subterranean level to level four, two hundred and eleven spaces. Um, access to this again would be from the, uh, alley to the north of the site, and pedestrians would, uh, be able to access their vehicles in the street level via a lobby that exits onto Sycamore Street. Uh, the remaining two hundred, uh, vehicle spaces could utilize one of the four city-owned parking structures that are within a short walk of the project site to make up for the rest of the public parking spaces. In regards to the entitlements for the project, an addendum was drafted. This tiered off of the two thousand ten Transit Zoning Code EIR, which was done with the adoption of the Transit Zoning Code and analyzed approximately four thousand residential units, uh, four hundred square feet of commercial space, and fifteen acres of open space. The proposed project before you tonight is just a small percentage of the, um, residential units and commercial space that was previously analyzed. In addition, a series of technical studies were prepared for the project, and the project is, is within a transit priority area in which aesthetics and parking impacts are not considered a significant impact. The addendum concluded that no new or substantially greater impacts would occur with the implementation of the proposed project when compared to those identified in the two thousand ten Transit Zoning Code EIR. Therefore, the applicable, um, project mitigation measures will continue to mitigate or lessen impacts that, um, that were already identified by the two thousand ten EIR. In regards to state law and the density bonus agreement, um, the applicant's proposing to include nineteen very low-income units dispersed throughout the project site. This would be attainable to, um, pay, uh, individuals and households that make between thirty to fifty percent of the area median income, and in exchange for providing those units, a density bonus of thirty-five percent is, uh, is provided to the applicant, which is an additional forty-four units. In addition, they're entitled to parking, uh, reduced parking standards at a rate of one space per studio, and one space per bedroom, and two spaces per two-bedroom, for a total of a hundred and ninety-six parking spaces. The state density bu- uh, law also grants waivers and concessions. Uh, waivers are items that would physically preclude a development from happening, and concessions are items that would allow the project to be financially feasible. These are waivers and concessions from development standards. The first, first one is floor area ratio, which the project proposes at four-point-two, when the downtown district center is a maximum of three-point-oh. The number of stories is proposed for sixteen, when the Transit Zoning Code, uh, line-block permits a maximum of ten stories. And for the two concessions, open space is in regards to the architectural, uh, design and location of the open space, not the quantity. So the open space is designed as open roof decks, rather than in forecourts or courtyard. For massing, this is, uh, the Transit Zoning Code requires that eighty-five percent of the third level be the maximum, where ninety-three percent is proposed. So here you can see some visual images of the parking for the hotel component. On the left is the site plan, uh, which shows the location of forty-two mechanical stackers and, uh, four ADA stalls. In addition, they'll be utilizing four, thirty-seven reserved valet parking spaces in the adjacent parking structure. For valet parking, um, this project, when applying the Transit Zoning Code parking standard, which is a rate of one parking space for four hundred square feet, requires a hundred and fifty-six parking spaces. However, the Santa Ana Municipal Code standard for hotels requires one parking space per room and one parking space for every ten rooms, for a total of eighty-three parking spaces, which would be required if utilized. The applicant, again, is providing, uh, to eighty-three parking spaces in the combination of stackers, valet parking, and, uh, regular parking spaces. Um, the Transit Zoning Code standard is actually higher than our municipal code standard, it, as it doesn't differentiate between any commercial uses. Uh, and this is actually providing more parking, is contrary to what our goals are of the Transit Zoning Code, to promote transit ridership, and, uh, as such, with the mixed-use and urban location of the project, staff supports the variance for the project. And also to note that the hotel parking standard for even the city, this Santa Ana Municipal Code standard, is higher than other, um, hotel-rich cities in Orange County. Conditions of approval are included for the variance, which require valet parking, reciprocal parking, and access easements. The last entitlement is the tentative parcel map. This would subdivide the property into two parcels, one for the mixed-use building, shown in red, and one for the hotel, approximately shown in blue. It's for condominium purposes to, uh, create airspace and ownership rights for those upper levels that were then shown on the cross-section, um, for, in order for the city to maintain ownership of the public parking spaces. It is a not-for-condominium units to be for sale for the residential project. This project is an apartment-for-rent project. With that, that concludes staff's presentation, and there's a staff recommendation. I also want to note that, um, we have available a variety of, uh, we have staff available from a variety of agencies, public works, community development, and planning and building, for any questions, along with the applicant and our environmental consultant.
Okay, thank you, Selena. Um, we'll start with, uh, Commissioner Garcia, do you have any questions of staff?
Not right now, thank you.
Commissioner Morrissey?
Uh, yes, I have a couple initial questions. Um, uh, first question is, uh, I, I saw on the presentation that the maximum height is ten stories. Is there, uh, a height, maximum height in feet?
Commissioner Morrissey, thank you for the question. The project is actually within a height-exempt area in the city, so there is no height limit. The Transit Zoning Code specifies the number of stories.
Okay. Um, the other question, another question is, um, what is the, uh, impact, the open space? Um, I don't think I understood the, um, the, uh, open space exemption. Um, can you explain that a little further? Uh, I, I've seen metrics about how, um, there's a certain amount of open space required per, uh, resident, and, um, so what is this doing to that, uh, ratio? Is it getting better, or staying same, or getting worse?
The ratio in regards to quantity of open space is met and exceeded. Um, the Transit Zoning Code for this, uh, building type requires fifteen percent of the lot, so that'd be approximately five thousand square feet of common open space, and, uh, more than half of that is provided at ten thousand square feet for common open space. And then there's an additional, um, seventy-five hundred square feet of private open space provided with, uh, individual unit balconies for, uh, some of the units. So the concession is in regards to the location and the design, not the quantity.
Okay, I understand. Thank you. Uh, another question is, um, will this project, I know that there were, there's, there are separate applications for the, um, hotel and, um, remainder of the project. Is this project going to be constructed as one project? Is it, is it being considered as a single project?
Yes, it's, uh, all being considered as one project, and this goes along with the disposition and development agreement terms that will be presented to council and have been, um, discussed with community development.
And, uh, maybe, like, I'll throw this out there, I was wondering, in terms of the, um, um, sequencing, when the parking structure's torn down, is there a plan, or is the parking in downtown at? there a plan, or is the parking in downtown adequate? So we'll be missing 440 parking spaces for a period of time? I'm not sure what, what that, how long that period will be, but is there a plan for providing, making up for that somehow?
Yes, during construction, the public would be utilizing the four adjacent city-owned public parking structures that are a short walk from the project site. They're highlighted in yellow here on the screen. And the, if you have any questions regarding that.
I think those are the only questions I have for now. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Nguyen.
I don't have any questions, but I, I have some comments. I, in my opinion, this project is much needed for the downtown area. I like the idea of coming, of the commercial, retail, residential, and it was the most important, the hotel development added to part of this project. I think the project will help to promote and increase businesses for the downtown, and revive the downtown area, much needed. I am personally support, as well support this project, and thank Mr. Hera for bringing this project up, see.
Okay, thank you. Ken, Commissioner Rivera. No, I don't have any comments, thank you. Okay, Commissioner Contreras, Vice Chair Contreras Leo, sorry.
No worries. Selena, can you, I know we reviewed the project prior, but, and you answered this question, but I'd like, I'd like it to be on record so like, the public can understand, because I didn't know what it meant before. You had mentioned that it's very low-income. Can you explain what that is, and also how our residents will be able to apply for this? It's not like other times where, you know, they'll hope to get properly selected, because other outside folks come in to apply for affordable housing. Can you explain that a little bit?
Hi, S., thank you, Vice Chair. I'm going to turn that question over to Judson Brown with the Housing Division, who's here for that question.
Thank you very much, Commissioner, for that, for that question. Again, my name is Judson Brown. I serve as our Housing Manager with our Community Development Agency. The 19 units, affordable housing units on-site, will be affordable to very low-income families who earn less than the affordability limits established by the Department of Housing and Community Development. Currently, the income limit for a one-person household is $44,850. For a two-person household is $51,250. And for a three-person household is $57,650. The developer, as part of their density bonus agreement, will be required to maintain a local preference for residents of Santa Ana who live in or work in our city. And they'll be required to maintain a waiting list of applicants for those units that will be subject to audit by our Housing Division to ensure that residents of the City of Santa Ana are being served in those 19 units. In addition, the property manager will be required to recertify the income eligibility of the families on an annual basis. And we will be monitoring those 19 units over the 55-year term of affordability to ensure that the units remain affordable to Santa Ana residents in our community.
Thank you. I think that's awesome, so thank you for explaining that. No other questions?
No other questions? Let me just, let me just build on that for clarification, because I'm not sure exactly what I heard. The units are strictly going to be for Santa Ana applicants only, or is it going to be a priority for Santa Ana applicants?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The city is unable to make it a requirement that the units are restricted only for residents of the City of Santa Ana, so it is a preference in leasing the units to households that live and or work in our city. So it's, it would be in violation of fair housing law, and non-discrimination, in preferences for housing occupancy, if we were to make it an absolute requirement that the units only serve residents of the City of Santa Ana, so it will be a preference. Now, that preference in practice, what it looks like in practice, so take, for example, our recent applications for Tiny Tim Plaza, renamed La Placita Cinco. The project received several hundred applicants for 51, those 51 units, from residents of the city. And so we do, in most all cases, in most all of our affordable housing projects, residents of the City of Santa Ana far exceed any applicants, applications from outside the city.
Okay, all right. So it isn't exclusive, it's just somewhat of a priority?
Yes, yes, sir, it's a preference.
That's all I have for questions of Selena at this point in time. No other questions of staff? Does anyone else want to have a question about the project with staff? Okay. Chairman, Madam Secretary, have we received any written communication on this item?
Yes, Chair, there were 22 comments, total comments received, 21 in favor, one in opposition. Those have been distributed and are posted on our website for review.
Okay. All right. And at this point in time, we would like to open up the public hearing. Would the applicant like to speak on this matter?
Yes, good evening. Good evening, Chair McGlaughlin, Honorable Planning Commissioners, Mike Hera. I think this project, you know, we've been working on it now for about six years. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. I, I can hear you, I'm sorry. Can everybody hear?
I can hear him.
Yes.
Okay, okay.
All right. So we've been working on this project for about six years, and it has culminated into a really, really great project. I believe this project adds so much to it. We've taken a lot of components, very low-income housing, we've included a PLA for the unions, hotel, bed tax, retail tax, the components of mixed use, all the items, and putting this project into supporting so much of the local community and everybody around, the residents included. You know, we've done a lot with the unions. We've made new businesses happening within the area with these, with this new building, as far as retail, the hotel, again, the TOT tax, the TOD, the light rail, the connection between Fourth Street and Third Street, all that area, bringing people to downtown. And one of the biggest things is the massing of people coming together, using, using, coming together in the area that used to have been closed off by Sycamore, will now be open. So we will have so many different events, and there'll be huge events that'll be outside, and a lot of the things that'll be going on will include everybody within the community. I think this is a really big, needed deal. Like, we started, we built Original Mike's years ago, as one of the first people down here, and also the Santora Building, and one of the, about 30 years ago. And we have seen a lot of things change, but there's not enough people around that area to directly go down and utilize all these businesses, which makes it kind of tough. I think this will open that up. It will make great things happen for our community, and it's just a really great thing that's going on here, and we need to push on that, especially with transit-oriented development. So with that, you know, I want to just say thank you very much for hearing us out, and the six years, and hundreds of thousands of dollars of putting this project together, and trying to make everything work for everyone. And have a blessed evening. Thanks, Mike Hera.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Hera. Do we have any, are there any questions of the applicant at this point in time, from the commission? Commissioner Garcia?
None at this time.
Okay. Commissioner Morrissey?
No questions at this time.
Okay. Commissioner Nguyen? No questions, thank you. Commissioner Rivera?
No questions at this time, thank you.
Vice Chair Contreras Leo?
Mr. Hera, I just want to say thank you again. You know, it's the second time you're at the commission this year, and thank you for bringing jobs again to our city. I was going to mention if you'd consider local hire, but you addressed that already. And I just want to say thank you for continuing to invest in our city and helping to revitalize it.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it, I'm honored to be here.
Okay. Thank you, Vice Chair Contreras Leo. I have no, no further comments, I appreciate the project at this point in time. What I'd like to do is open up the public comments for those that are calling in. Madam Secretary, do we have any people that are online right now to talk about this item?
We do. Callers, if you'd like to speak on this item, please dial *9. Please remember to dial *6 to unmute yourself. After you've done so, please state your name and your position on the matter. You will have three minutes, and I will alert you when your time is up. First caller with the last three digits of 802, please dial *6 and go ahead.
Thank you, Chairman McGlaughlin and Commissioners. My name is Doug Mangione, and I am speaking on behalf of the 2,500 working men and women of the Brotherhood, Brotherhood of Electrical Workers in Orange County. The IBW supports the recommended actions for this project. I think this will enhance the downtown and make it the destination it deserves to be. As a veteran, I particularly like the veteran hiring preference that the developer has agreed to. And also, the local hire preference, this project will provide opportunities for young men and women to enter our apprenticeship and to start a career in a highly, well-paid, with well, good benefits, construction industry. Local IBW started here in Santa Ana in 1928, and we have been providing highly skilled electrical workers to our signatory contractors in Orange County for almost 100 years, and our apprenticeship is based right here in good old Santa Ana. So I applaud the developer, and I applaud him working with us and providing opportunities for high-shape jobs in the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Doug Mangione. Next.
Next caller with the last three digits of 273, please dial *6, state your name, your position, and your comment. Go ahead.
Hi, good evening, Chairman and members of the commission. My name is Ernesto Medrano. I represent the Los Angeles and Orange County Building and Construction Trade Council, and I'm also calling here to urge a recommendation on the approval of the density bonus agreement application. The Building Trade Council is in touch with the developer for its project labor agreement that'll provide the skilled and trained workers, it'll provide the local hire, better preferences, as you heard, but also provide strong safety standards for the construction workers that'll be working on the job site. The other good thing about it is that it'll allow the two apprenticeship readiness curriculum courses, one at Century High School, the other one at Santa Ana College, give them the potential opportunities to enter into working through their apprenticeship for joint labor management programs. So I don't want to belabor the good things that have been said in the spirit of efficiency, I just want to urge this commission to approve the item, and we're excited to partner with Caribou Industries to be able to build this great facility, this great building. Thank you.
Thank you, Ernesto. Next.
Next caller with the last three numbers, 243, please dial *6 to unmute yourself, state your name, your position, and your comment. Go ahead.
Lou, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay, perfect, sorry about that. My name is Lou Sanderz Perez, I'm the political director for the United Association, formers and seat holders, Local 582. I'm urging you to call and really support the project. I think it's a perfect project, it's wonderful, from an aesthetic design, but also too, the fact that it's going to bring in 171 multifamily housing units, a 75-room hotel, and then with mixed-use components, an additional 19 low-income housing units with preference for Santa Ana residents. I think this is a really great development overall. In addition to the project labor agreement, Mr. Hera is willing to sign with the Los Angeles and Orange County Building Trade Council. So once again, I'm just urging for you guys to support the project. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Caller with the last three numbers, 475, please dial *6, state your name, your position, and your comment. Go ahead.
Yeah, hello, my name is Doug Robbins. I'm a business representative for the Painters and Allied Trade Union. I represent about 10,000 of the best trained workforce in the painting, drywall finishing, glazing, and resilient flooring industry. I would like to express my support for the Third and Broadway, Broadway project. The developer has committed to the building trade for a project labor agreement, which will have local hire requirements to ensure that the community residents have the opportunity to work in the city where they live. That will provide hundreds of well-paid jobs and apprenticeship opportunities for a career in the construction industry, as well as giving preference to hire veterans for this project to a home and stuff hard hats program. And you hear all this talk in local governments about fiscal shortages due to the COVID-19. I can't think of a better way to boost the local economy but to move forward with this project. And it's probably great for the City of Santa Ana and its residents. I strongly urge you to approve this project tonight. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Caller with the last three numbers, 361, please dial *6, and state your name, your position, and your comment. Go ahead.
Good evening, this is John Hannah, representing the Southwest Regional Council of Carpenters, 55,000 carpenters in the Southwest. I want to speak tonight, I'm an Orange resident, but I want to speak in support of the staff recommendations for the, this project, the 201 West Third Street, and on certain Broadway. This project is a good fit for the area. I worked for over two decades at Second and Main Street, just catty corner away from here. And when I started, this was a desolate, unsafe area. And the city leaders have, and the private sector have transformed this area into an area with good housing and restaurants and other commercial establishments. This project will provide the icing on the cake for this area, much-needed tax revenue. You don't have to tax people to death, you just have to create the commercial situation where the tax revenue will come in voluntarily, and that will help supply much-needed services for Santa Ana. There will be sufficient parking, and one of the reasons there will be, as some of the staff had mentioned, and speakers, is this is just a block away from a stop of the OC Streetcar, which will revolutionize, I think, a lot of transit use for people who will be living in this, one of the projects that we're dealing here. I want to also say that, I want to commend Caribou and Mr. Hera for demonstrating that they are going to build this with a skilled and trained workforce, with an agreement that will ensure that Santa Ana residents, and especially young Santa Ana residents, coming out of Remington, coming out of the Rancho Santiago Community College District of Programs, its construction trade, will be getting these jobs, they will be working in the community that they live in. So I would just say, thank you for, to Mr. Medrano and to Mr. Hera for working on that agreement. And I want to thank this planning commission, who has recently stood up in support of skilled and trained workforce. And now you have a builder who doesn't need a financial incentive. And now, you have a builder who doesn't need a financial incentive to do the right thing, to have a skilled and trained workforce. He's bringing a community benefit to Santa Ana, and I say, welcome. You've been here a long time, and you once again are giving back to the community, Mr. Hera. So, I urge you, this commission, to support this project.
Thank you, John.
Thank you. Caller with the last three numbers, two three nine, please dial star six to unmute yourself. State your name, your position, and your comment. Go ahead.
Good evening, Chairman McLaughlin and members of the planning commission. My name is Boris Presley, and I'm the Public Affairs Representative for the Carpenter's Contractors Cooperation Committee. QUATC, as we're commonly known, is a labor management organization comprised of the Southwest Regional Council of Carpenters and Union Contractors. QUATC is committed to quality development and quality construction jobs, which we believe the Third and Broadway project represents. This project will create hundreds of high-wage skilled construction jobs and provide a pathway to middle-class opportunities for not just Santa Ana, but the entire region. We urge the commission to approve this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Boris.
Caller with the last three numbers, four three eight, please press star six to unmute yourself. State your name, your position, and your comment. Go ahead.
Hi, good evening. My name is Paul Moreno, and I'm a business agent for ironworkers Local 433. And I'm just calling in support of this project. I mean, this is a perfect project, like everyone has said, and with these type of projects, it continues to give us the opportunity to put our Santa Ana residents to work. And more important, through the MC3 program that we have, to take the youth, and give them opportunities in our apprenticeships, which are careers and good-paying jobs. I also sit on a welding advisory committee for a state college. And, you know, this project, again, will give us the opportunity to take those graduates from the college, from their welding programs, and put them directly to work on projects like this, you know, the residents of Santa Ana. So, I just urge you to support this project.
Thank you very much. Next.
Caller with the last three numbers, seven two zero, please dial star six to unmute yourself. State your name, your position, and your comment. Go ahead.
Good evening. My name is Ray Barker. I am the executive director for the Engineering Contractors Association, representing infrastructure contractors here in Southern California. On behalf of the members of the ECA, we respectfully urge you to vote for further approvals for this Third and Broadway project, including the requested density bonus agreement and the site plan review applications, as well as the others. We feel this is an important step toward the advancement of the overall project, enhancing the appeal of the entire area with a balanced set of priorities, as others have mentioned this evening, and of course, providing for hundreds with construction career opportunities for local area workers. The ECA wishes to express appreciation for your hard work, and we urge continued support for the Third and Broadway project. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Caller with the last three digits, zero three three, please dial star six to unmute yourself. State your name, your position, and your comment. Go ahead.
Good evening, planning commission. My name is Todd Golden. I'm the business manager for Sprinkler Fitters, Local 709. We have 1,100 members working in the Los Angeles, Orange County area. We actively have 245 apprentices enrolled into our program. And we've been providing skilled and trained labor here for 100 years. We urge the commission to approve this project. The project will create hundreds of jobs for skilled construction workers in our area, and it will also open the door for young men and women who want to enter the skilled and trained apprenticeship program that the building trades provide. These trade, these apprenticeship programs provide long-lasting careers to these young men and women. And it's important that we kick-start them off. And what better way to do it than stand in your community? We thank you for your time and your consideration, and hopefully have a good night. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Caller with the last three digits, nine nine four, please dial star six to unmute yourself. State your name, your position, and your comment. Go ahead.
Yes, this is Dave Elliott, President and CEO of the Santa Ana Chamber of Commerce. I'm here to support this project. We feel that this is a strong economic development project for our city. It does many, many things. So, when you think of a hotel that is greatly needed in the downtown area, when you think of the housing component, the parking component, the job creation, the development of additional tax revenue for the city, this is a great project, and I just want to commend Mike Hera and city staff, and I hope that the commission, as well as our council, will approve this project and moving forward, and let's get it done. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave.
Caller with the last three digits of three seven two, please dial star six to unmute yourself. State your name, your position, and your comment. Go ahead.
Hello, my name's Alfonso Ruiz. I'm proud member of the Local Five Insulators Union, and a longtime resident of Santa Ana and Orange County. Since the economics of this project have been clearly laid out, I'd like to take a more personal approach and place focus and emphasis on the hundreds of fantastic, high-paying jobs and apprenticeship opportunities that this project would bring to Santa Ana and Orange County residents, as well as our much-deserving veterans. The reason I stated that this was personal is because the opportunities from the approval of these types of projects and project labor agreements have been, without exaggeration, life-saving for me. And I'm proud to say that they have allowed me to just this last week become a first-time homeowner here. And that's a very big deal to me, and I'm very proud to say that. So, with that said, I believe it is my and our collective moral obligation and duty to extend these wonderful opportunities that have done so much for me and my family to all of my fellow neighbors in Santa Ana and Orange County. In closing, I'd like to thank my fellow tradesmen, fellow union members, and supporters of skilled labor on the call for giving me the opportunity for a better life. And I urge the council to please approve the staff recommendation on item two, so that you can help others live better as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
If there are any other callers that would like to speak on this item, please dial star nine now. I'll wait a few seconds. Chair, there are no other speakers.
Okay, thank you, Madam Secretary. At this point in time, we will close the public hearing, and we'll bring it back to the commission. Does the commission have any questions or final statements that they'd like to make at this point in time? We'll start with Commissioner Garcia.
Nothing, thank you.
Commissioner Morrissey?
Yes, I have a few things I'd like to... First, I have a question for staff. Is there a height restriction in the National Historic District?
No, there is not.
Okay. I'd like to thank Mr. Hera for being there for Santa Ana and being the one who proposed on this property. It's been a long time coming, and I'm looking forward to this project. It's going to be really great for Santa Ana for all the reasons everybody stated. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Morrissey. Commissioner Nguyen?
I have no questions or comment. Is that possible, to be able to put out a motion?
You can put a motion together right now. I mean, we'll still hear comments, but you can put a motion.
Okay. I would like to put out a motion to approve an addendum to the environment impact report for transit zoning code projects of the mitigation monitoring reporting program for variant 2020-01, and tentative map number 20-02, variant number 2020-5, for self-upstream parking with alignment as condition, and tentative partial map number 2020-02 as...
Okay, Ken, thank you for the motion. Do we have a... All right, Commissioner Rivera, do you have any questions or comments at this point in time?
No, no questions or comments.
Okay. Commissioner Vice Contreras Leo?
No comment.
Chair, sorry. Okay, no comment, no comment at this point in time. So, we have a motion at this point in time. Do we have a second on that motion?
Yes, Commissioner Rivera, second.
Commissioner Rivera, second? Okay. So, we have a motion, a second, and just ask if there's any last comments that are going to be made at this point in time, or questions that need to be made? So, if you have a comment, a question, please do it at this point.
Commissioner, this is Lisa Stork. If I may, there's also a recommended action that you recommend that the city council do, two actions as well. So, I just wanted to point that out to Commissioner Nguyen and his motion.
Okay, so, Ken, you'll take the friendly amendment to clarify the entire...
That's correct. That's correct. Recommend the city vote to a top rated approved and addendum to environment report, and also adopt the mitigation on report program for ten street bonus, 6020-01, and site plan review, 202, and this is for women, density report for women, 2020-01, with possession and weight of site plan two, number 2020-01, for mixed-use development, a site line review, number 2020-02, hotel as...
Thank you, Commissioner Nguyen. Thank you.
Okay, and Commissioner Rivera, you second that, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. So, we have a motion, a second, no further questions. Madam Secretary, please call for the vote.
We'll call vote on item number two. Commissioner Garcia?
Aye.
Aye. Commissioner Morrissey?
Aye.
Commissioner Nguyen?
Aye.
Commissioner Rivera?
Aye.
Vice Chair Contreras Leo?
Aye.
Chair McLaughlin?
Aye.
Motion passes six zero with Commissioner Fan recusing herself.
Thank you very much. Mike, good luck with the project, as has been said by others. This is going to be a really great incentive for the downtown area, and hopefully do a lot more to build along, to build more and more vibrant businesses and opportunities downtown. So, thank you for your support, and thank you for taking this project on.
Chair McLaughlin, thank you, and members of the commission, thank you very much, and have a very blessed evening. Look forward to bettering our city.
Have a good evening. Great, thank you. With that, this concludes the business calendar. We're going to move on to comments and move on to the work-study session. Commissioner Fan, has she rejoined us?
Yes, I'm back, thank you.
Okay.
Aye.
Is that Ken?
Yes, yes.
You're going to... You're leaving at this time?
That is correct.
Thank you for joining us, and thank you for participating in the two items, and take care of your personal matters. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Bye-bye.
Okay. It's now time to review and discuss the proposed mixed-use development project located at 409 and 509 East Fourth Street. Please note, no action will be taken on this item. Pedro, is Pedro going to be presenting, or are you going to be doing this, Vince?
Pedro.
Pedro's on the line.
Okay. All right, Pedro, go ahead.
I'm sorry, before we set my seat, Chairman, I can't, I couldn't really see what's been happening, volume went away.
You... I'm sorry.
I don't know if I lose our experience, it's been on the scene with something, but it was a weird noise, and now I can barely hear anyone.
Okay.
Can you hear me, Vice Chair?
Yes, it's on the house, and I can't really hear you. Should I call back in?
Chair McLaughlin, can you do a test and see if Vice Chair Contreras Leo can hear you?
I can hear Vice Chair Contreras Leo. I can hear her. Can you hear me?
And I can hear you, but it's just extremely, like, super far away, this wasn't like this.
Okay. You want to call back in? You know, we can try that at this point in time.
Go ahead and continue, I'm trying to call back in, I can barely hear you, babe.
Thank you.
All right, well, go ahead, call back in right away, and we'll hold off for a couple minutes, a couple minutes here.
Okay, so she's left the meeting, and we'll wait for her to rejoin.
Has she called back in?
Not yet. Just one moment, we'll be alerted when we have a new caller.
Hello, Sarah?
Yes.
Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes, we can, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so Vice Chair Contreras Leo?
Hundred percent better again, thank you. Sorry for the inconvenience.
Can you hear us? Can you hear us?
Absolutely. That's normal.
All right, terrific, okay. Let's move on to our presentation. Pedro, please go ahead.
Good evening, Chairman and Commissioners. Tonight, I will be presenting on a proposed project referred to as Fort and Mortimer Mixed Use Development. Next up, please. Okay. The project is proposed to be located in downtown on two city blocks, addresses 409 and 509 East Fourth Street. 409 will be referred to as Site A, and 509 as Site B. These two sites are located on the northeast intersection of Fort and French Streets, and Fort at Mortimer. Site A is approximately 1.423 acres in size, and Site B approximately 1.292 acres in size. Site A has a general designation of district center, and is zoned transit zoning code SD-84 with a downtown subzone designation. Site B has a general designation of urban neighborhood, zoned SD-84 with an urban neighborhood to subzone designation. Both sites are surrounded by commercial and single and multifamily residential to the north, east, and to the south. And to the west of the sites are more commercial and the city parking garage. I do want to note that the existing commercial facility means auto repair, located at the northeast corner of Fort and Mortimer Streets, at 501 East Fourth Streets, is not part of the proposed project. These next slides show some site photos for reference. Letter A is a view of Fort and French Street intersections. Letter B is a view of Fort Street, Site A of the North Gate Market. Letter C is a view of Fort Street, Site A, and Site B, North Gate and Ming's Auto. Next slide. So, Letter D is a view from Site A looking towards Mortimer Street. Letter E is a view of Fort and... Letter E is the view of Fort and French Street, uh, intersection. And letter F is the view of Fifth and Mentor Street intersection. Next slide, please. The, uh, project includes demolition of the existing North Gate and Bellis Market and surface parking lot at site, as well as the demolition of existing commercial auto service building and accessory structures at Site B. Once the sites are cleared, the applicant is supposed to construct a mixed-use community. Both sites, on both sites, contain two sixty-nine residential units, uh, eleven thousand three hundred twenty-one square feet of leasable commercial area and four hundred and twenty-two onsite parking spaces. Uh, the development would also provide onsite amenities which would include a roof deck, a courtyard, pool, outdoor and fitness areas. As part of the project, the applicant is proposing to change the subzone for Site B from urban neighborhood two to urban subzone. Next slide, please. Uh, this next slide provides the view of the established subzones within the current transit zoning codes. The area designated is shown in the black dotted line and in the blown-up areas to the right. You can see that the entire block where Site A is posed, uh, would be changed from UN two subzone to UC subzone. Next slide, please. The next, the next slide provides the proposed site plan. Uh, Site A will contain a mixed-use commercial rest structure with ninety-nine residential units, a thousand eight hundred forty square foot tenant suite designed for an eating establishment, seven thousand five hundred and fourteen square feet of retail space and a resident and leasing, uh, lobby, site amenities, a bicycle storage and a four tap storage above-ground parking garage with two hundred and thirty parking spaces. The building frontage along Fourth Street and the intersections of Fort and French, um, Fort and Mortimer is seven stories in height and the building would be five stories in height along the French Street and Mortimer's carnages. Uh, Site B is designed to be a residential building and will contain seventy units and a four-story above-ground parking garage with a hundred and ninety-two onsite parking spaces. Um, uh, please. Uh, the next slide provides the conceptual line, sign for both sites. Uh, Site A would include about twenty-eight thousand five hundred and seventy square feet of open space including fifteen thousand three hundred and forty-five public common space and eight thousand four hundred square feet of private open space. Site B would include, uh, approximately sixteen thousand square feet of open space including thirteen thousand two hundred thirty-three of public, uh, slash common space and approximately twenty-eight hundred for private open space. Next slide, please. Uh, these next series of slide, by the overview of design of both buildings, um, both sites have been carefully designed with the existing development pattern in downtown Santa Ana. The ground floor of building A is in the main street commercial architectural style consistent with the identifiable patterns typical of downtown buildings. And then the residential units are designed California contemporary style. Next slide, please. The buildings, uh, vary height from seven stories to five, um, for Site A generates a smooth transition from the higher density character of the Inter, Fort and French to the lower density character of the single-family residence to the north and to the east. Next slide, please. Uh, buildings B, buildings B is purely residential, um, and it complements the existing multifamily development along Fourth Streets. A landscape buffers provide for each site, uh, creating a transition space between the top structure and the street level while also providing screening at the lower level of the garages, uh, adjacent to the single-family residence. In addition, um, both structures is less than the massing of the project with elevation, bringing articulation, multiple volume, uh, and varied architecture style. Uh, each site has its own unique architectural nacular that is defined by the scale, the soldered articulation, roof forms, materials and detailings. Um, for example, a variety of window dimensions are provided for appropriate while, uh, the trim details vary between sites. Varied material color palette from both buildings. In addition to varied window recesses and depth elements, uh, while color palette is across both sites, uh, care has been taken to provide unified look to coordinate the surrounding building. Uh, both structures will be herbal brick veneer, glass, smooth stucco finishes, metal awnings and textured block panels. Next slide, please. Uh, these next couple of slides from a couple of different factors. The first one is of Site A at the intersection of Fort and French Streets. Next slide. Uh, this next one is along Fourth Street looking north at Site A. You can see, um, retail for ground floor. Next slide. The last, um, is along Fourth Street but looking west at Site B and Site A. Next slide. Uh, approval of this project would require an attempt, the environmental impact report for the transit zoning code and adoption of a mitigation monitoring and reporting program. It would require site plan review for mixed-use developments over four-storing height, uh, would require a variance increase in allowable building size enassing for Site B, the building Site E. And it would require an amendment application zone change for Site B from SD eighty-four, um, urban neighborhood to urban center subzone. Next slide. Uh, the public hearing is tentatively scheduled for October twelfth, uh, for the October twelfth Planning Commission meeting for consideration of the addenda, site plan review, and of the, and subsequently the item will be scheduled for council meeting, uh, tentatively scheduled for November seventeenth for considerations of the addenda and the application. Next slide. That, uh, concludes staff's presentation. Uh, I'm available for questions at this time. I also like to note that we have the applicant and representatives from North Gate on, for tonight's meeting if there's any questions that would not be directed towards them. Thank you.
Thank you. Pedro, can you, uh, just, um, reconfirm the dates that the Planning Commission will see this? And the council will see this?
Of course. Uh, Planning Commission, I think, we scheduled for October twelfth and November seventeen with the City Council public hearing.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, does the commission, do any of the commissions have any questions with regards to this? I'll start with Commissioner Garcia.
None at this time.
Okay. Commissioner Morrissey? Commissioner Morrissey?
Commissioner Morrissey is on the line. I'm sorry, we're just looking through the list to see if he's still on the line. It looks like he is not on the line, Chair. Um, I will reach out to him on the side here to see if he had some technical difficulties.
Okay. Commissioner Rivera? No comments, no questions? No, none. Thank you. Commissioner Fan?
Hi, yes. Uh, first, before I make my comment, I do want to disclose that the applicant has reached out to me and, uh, discussed this project with me. So, uh, before I go any further, I wanted to state that. Um, the second question I have is, obviously, there's gonna be a lot of, uh, housing that is developed. Is this project subject to the housing opportunity ordinance? And if so, uh, how do they intend to comply with it?
Thank you, Commissioner. As, uh, the commission may be, the housing opportunity ordinance has recently revised, um, and it went to, uh, the City Council for consideration. Uh, at the time that the project will be heard, uh, for their October twelfth meeting, the ordinance, the new ordinance would be in effect. So, the project doesn't, uh, trick the housing opportunity ordinance, uh, for the revised, uh, who.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Commissioner Fan?
Um, that's it for now, thanks.
Okay. Um, Vice Chair Contreras Leo?
Yes, um, the, is, is that a mechanic shop on Site B at this time? That's not part of the project? Okay. So, so my understanding is they're, they're sitting tight. But what happens once the zoning is changed? How does affect, how does it affect the business?
The zone change should not affect the business. It can remain there as an existing auto shop. Um, even with the, uh, zoning that it is now with the UN two, I, I'm not familiar, I don't have the code in front of me, but that used by being, meaning that it was there before the transit zoning, uh, code was put in place and it's allowed to remain as long, um, has a certificate of occupancy and business license. Um, the moment it stops operating for a period of time and it no longer applies to transit zoning code, then a new user will have to comply with transit zoning code. The change in the subzone wouldn't change that. Um, it's not gonna affect the business, uh, at all now. The only way it would affect the business is if, you know, the site was developed, it would now be able to, uh, design a building that is allowed within the urban center, um, subzone.
Okay. And do you know if, a decided curiosity, is the, the business owner there looking to permanently stay or are they actually looking to, to move?
Um, you know what? I, I may have to, um, defer that question to the app. I know there's been, uh, numerous conversations regarding this site, but as far as I know, the, um, applicant or the business owner is gonna stay. Um, I wanna note though, if, you know, for whatever reason, um, there's private agreement, the business owner is leasing that site, it would eventually be, uh, incorporated as part of the whole project, um, ideally.
Okay. Thank you.
So, uh, Pedro, just to clarify, um, what you just said, um, a couple things. I'm gonna go back to Commissioner Fan's. There is no, there is no application of the who, uh, or, you know, the who ordinance, uh, for, in Lufy's with this particular project, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And going back to Cynthia's question, I just wanna get clarification. The current, that, that garage, that mechanic shop is adjacent to the property, but it is not part of the property at this point in time and will remain in, in, as, as long as it stays open, it'll remain in the same zoning that it currently has?
Let me see, like, so the, the site is made up of ten individual parcels. I know those parcels are owned by one owner. Um, the last parcel, Ming's Auto, is owned by different, so that's gonna remain. The zoning is gonna change zone, the subzone from urban neighborhood to on all ten parcels, including the site that's not included as part of it. And that, to be consistent, you don't wanna leave this one out live parcel with a different designation.
Okay. Alright. Does, does anybody have any questions with regards to the applicant? And would the, let me just say, at this point in time, would the applicant like to speak on this project?
Applicant, if you'd like, um, please dial star six to unmute yourself and, um, address the commission.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Well, good evening, uh, Honorable Chair McLaughlin and Honorable Members of the Planning Commission. My name is Juan Garcia. I'm the Community Engagement V A for North Gate and Bellis Market. Tonight, I do have with me Andrew Nelson, who's the Principal at Red Oak Investments, as well as Carl Middleton, who's President of North Gate Real Estate. Uh, we just wanna, actually, right now, just thank staff, uh, for their guidance and cooperation in helping us to get to this point, uh, in time with our project. We do believe that this is a good quality transit-oriented development that's going to help bring vibrancy to the downtown area and that, uh, for the most part, the development does meet, uh, majority of planning guidelines and the intent of the transit zoning code. Uh, we are more than happy to go ahead and try to address some of the questions that the Planning Commission may have. I, I do wanna go ahead and, um, indicate to you that we have been working with the owners of the Ming's parcel, uh, trying to see if, uh, there's an interest or desire on their part to sell the property. And we're gonna continue to do, uh, do so throughout the entire process.
Okay. Does anyone have a question or would anybody like to have a question with, uh, or comment with the developer at this point in time? Commissioner Garcia?
Uh, no questions, uh, just a comment that, uh, the applicant also reached out to me, uh, a few weeks ago and, uh, to discuss the project and I did speak to them. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for that disclosure. Commissioner Morrissey?
He's off the line, Chair. And will not be returning.
Okay, still off the line, thanks. Okay, um, Commissioner Rivera?
No, no questions or comments.
Okay. Vice Chair Contreras, uh, Commissioner Fan?
Hi, this question is for the applicant. Um, so I understand that under the amended, because this is part of, I believe, the downtown Santa Ana special district is, is exempt. Uh, please correct me if I'm wrong. Uh, but will there be any affordable housing that is going to be developed? Or, you know, will be a result of this development?
So, sure, I'm happy to go ahead and address that. So, this, this particular project right here is actually gonna be, uh, market rate housing. Uh, however, we are right now in discussions in trying to come up with a, uh, development with, uh, CNC development, uh, that would be for affordable housing. Uh, we, we do have a couple of parcels that we're looking at, but right now, we're not, uh, at a point in time where we can go ahead and disclose where we are in those discussions.
Okay, and my other question is regarding the, um, market itself. Um, I grew up next to, uh, North Gate, they're fantastic and, you know, they're really central in the neighborhood. So, uh, where are all those employees going to go during construction?
Well, thank you for the question. Uh, you know what? I just wanted to go ahead and emphasize to you, uh, with regard to the, the previous question, that we are truly committed to making certain that we come up with affordable housing at another location. We will, we will go ahead and, uh, commit to something like that. Now, with regard to the current associates that we have at that store right there, we're going to go ahead and, and place them at other stores right there in the general vicinity. And, um, pleased to say that, once we end up actually developing the new, um, store, that that one right there is going to probably have twice the number of associates. So, uh, nobody is going to be displaced and we will, uh, actually continue to provide, uh, a shopping, um, uh, market for folks who are accustomed to shopping right there at that location at Fort and Mortimer.
Um, that's fantastic. First, I really wanna commend you for your commitment to supporting Santa Ana residents in providing affordable housing. I think that that is just really something fantastic and that shows you're really invested in the community. Um, secondly, uh, regarding hiring, oh, you know, you're expanding your workforce. I, I can't record, but I would love to see that you, uh, focus on hiring, um, local residents, uh, veterans and, um, folks from the community because obviously it'd be great if they worked near where they live. Um, and that's all my questions for now. Thanks.
Oh, thank you for your comment.
Thank you, Commissioner. Go ahead.
No, I was just gonna, uh, indicate that, uh, you know, while the project has not been let, uh, we are gonna go ahead and, uh, you know, look to, um, the possibilities of being able to, uh, hire, uh, local, uh, folks where we can.
Okay, great. We appreciate that. Um, Vice Chair Contreras Leo? Any questions of the applicant?
Uh, no, and I'm not sure if I shared earlier, but I also reviewed the project with the applicant. So, most of my questions have been answered. I think it's a, another great project adding to our downtown. Thank you.
Okay, and I too, uh, did have some contact with the applicant and we discussed a number of items. So, I wanna make sure that that's also disclosed. Um, at this point in time, if there's no final questions from, uh, for staff or for the applicant, we will close the, uh, we will close this step with the, we will close the step and, um, uh, go on to final pass staff comments.
Oh, Chair, if I may?
Yes.
I'd like to report that we did receive, uh, written communication on this item. There were two letters. letters and they were both in, in favor. And then I will go ahead, we do have some callers in the queue, so I will go ahead, um, and ask if any would like to comment on this work-study item. Please dial star nine now. I'll wait a couple of moments. Okay, there's no, there's no one who would like to speak.
Okay, so.
Oh, I'm sorry, Chair.
We have, we have.
We had one, uh, one person who raised their hand, um, caller there, it seems as if it's a private number, so I don't have the last three numbers, but whoever raised their, uh, whoever dialed star nine, please press star six to unmute yourself and state your name and your comment. Go ahead.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, we can.
Sorry about the, sorry about the private call. Um, my name is Lysandro. I am a resident in French Park. I, uh, sorry I didn't get earlier during just the general public comment period. So I was just, I know you guys aren't, um, required to open up work-study sessions. I appreciate allowing me to comment on this. So I just wanted to mention that I really appreciate the fact that the developer went ahead and changed the design of the project. I was present at the first, I think it was the Sunshine Community Meeting. Um, maybe it was almost like a year ago or two years ago. And the design was really suburban in nature. I think they even had garages funding one of the, one of the streets along the, uh, site B. So this, this project is much better, especially the, the Ford Street facade on Building A. Uh, the, the street level is fantastic, so that's really awesome to see. Um, one of the comments I would just add, uh, is parking is really high. Two point three or two point four, that's, that's kind of crazy for downtown, which we're trying to create a, really a transit oriented development, but of course, um, that's not on the developer. That's just our standard. I think our standard is two in the transit zoning code, which I still think should be reduced in the future because it is extremely high when you're going to have a lot of, um, amenities in downtown, which isn't required for folks to use a car and you're going to have the O C C car as well. Um, the, the last thing that I just wanted to mention is, I guess it's a common question regarding the windows. I think the windows are going to be really important for this development to just make it look really nice. Uh, so I would recommend that developers, if they can, do not just use hung slider windows and to use, you know, like, just turn copper windows or casement window, um, or hinged windows. Because the sliders tend to look really bad when, uh, when it's on multifamily projects that are multi-story. So those are the, the summary of my comments. I really like the fact that the project is being proposed because the current Northgate market goes its back to the street on Ford Street and you don't really get an interaction with any building. It's just a blank wall. This would be an improvement. Um, that, that's everything I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Madam Secretary, do we have anybody else who would like to speak on this item?
No other speakers, Chair.
Okay, um, hearing that, then we'll, we'll bring it back, uh, one more time to, uh, the commission and, um, see if we have any final comments. And thank you for, thank you for noting the written communication on this item too.
Yes.
Um, so at this point in time, does anyone, does any of the commissioners want to comment or question staff at this, at this juncture on this work-study? Commissioner Garcia?
No questions remain. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Rivera?
No, no questions. Thank you.
And, um, Commissioner Fan?
There are just a couple of comments while we're here. Um, I, I really love the mural and the, the graphics descriptions. I do hope that you consider, or the applicant considers carrying that across to Building Z, which is, um, much more beige overall, and I think would really help tie in the development with each other and bringing some color on that end of the street. Um, and also doing something with the parking structure. I understand that it is the backside of the development, however, you know, neighbors have to look at it every day and there's no reason why it has to be really boring and gray and so maybe some color or something to spruce it up would be really great. And those are all my comments for today. Thank you.
Vice Chair Contreras Leo?
Nothing at this time. Thank you.
Okay, um, I guess my one comment is that I do appreciate what, uh, was brought through in the public, uh, hearing and that is, is that, uh, it appears that for all intent purposes, from the Sunshine Ordinance meeting to now, uh, the applicant has done a lot of, um, updating and changing of the original design predicated on the input from the community. I think that's a great, uh, great testimony to the sunshine process and, and seeing how we bring the neighborhoods in and it's good to know that the neighborhoods are in support of this particular project that surround this particular project and look forward to, um, moving on and, and reviewing this in its final stages on, uh, I guess it's ten, twelve, we're going to have the, the project in front of the Planning Commission. So we look forward to seeing it at that point in time again. And, uh, thank you for your, uh, continued support of the downtown area in San Ana. Okay. Is there, is there anything else? We're going to move on to open, to staff comments? Staff, are there any comments that we have at this point in time?
I have no comments at this time. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman Vince Fagoso, just want to say thank you for tonight, your patience with us, and also thank you to Pedro for helping us out in this presentation. You may not know, but he got married yesterday, but still came forward today to attend your Planning Commission, so uh, thank you to Pedro and congrats.
So, so, so we, we, Pedro, we were your, your honeymoon?
No, Pedro, you're not starting on the right foot.
I am not.
You know, I'm messing with you. Congratulations.
Yeah, congratulations, Pedro.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, and, and, and thanks, thanks for having your honeymoon with us. I mean, geez.
Well, I have to thank my wife for sharing me for the night, so.
Okay, well, we'll, we'll thank her in a big way, all right?
He's, he's committed to the job, Mr. Chairman.
There you go. There you go. He'll remember that twenty-five years from now and boy, that'll be a tough one.
She will. She will.
That's it. Thank you. You know, Lisa, you're right. All right. Commissioner Garcia, have you got any comments for this evening?
No, thank you and, uh, congratulations, Pedro.
Thank you. Commissioner Rivera?
Just wanted to say thank you. I am, congrats, Pedro.
Okay, Commissioner Fan?
Hi, yes, two comments. First of all, well, first, thank you staff and all the applicants in preparing all of this. Secondly, I just want to do a last comment about completing the census. It ends on Wednesday, September thirtieth. We still have time. It takes twenty seconds to do, so please complete that. And finally, um, the, which is the Vietnamese Mid-Autumn Festival is on Thursday and it's a big celebration for the community. Um, it brings in the fall, so I really hope that folks can go out there, buy some green cakes and celebrate with their families. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Fan. Vice Chair Contreras Leo?
Uh, no, I, well, I do want to thank staff for, um, you know, reaching out to us to meet with, in regard to the project prior. I think it went a lot smoother, uh, being informed and coming in and last minute questions just went so much better. Thank you, Mark, for, for guiding us through this, but just want to say I appreciated that. And Pedro, many blessings on your new journey.
Thank you very much.
That's all, Chairman.
Okay, thank you, Vice Chair Contreras Leo. Um, again, I think, uh, just, yes.
I'm so sorry, the, the deadline for the census was extended to October fifth, so there's no excuse not to do it. Please fill out the census.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Fan. Okay, um, I'd just like to say thanks for staff for doing what they did with regards to sitting down individually and going through the questions that we might have with regards to the Third and Broadway project. Um, this is something probably on some of these major projects, we probably should consider in the future, uh, so that, uh, each, each individual commissioner has the ability to go through in detail with the process rather than have it done at the, at the commission level. I think it makes sense to have some insight and some further instruction, details early on. Um, I think that, uh, it was great to see that we have two very exciting programs that are planned for downtown. And I think that, um, you know, we are going to need these projects in order to, in fact, continue to come back in our business, uh, with our businesses after this COVID situation. So I think that this is all good. And the sooner we can get these projects going, the better off we'll be, both from the labor and building it and those that will end up living in the units and everything else. So, um, thank you for taking the time to go through this. And I have no further, um, comments at this point, but, um, I would like to note that the next regularly scheduled Planning, uh, Commission meeting is scheduled for Monday, October twelfth at five thirty. And with that, we'll adjourn the meeting. Thank you, everybody, for joining us this evening and, uh, be safe.
Thank you, Chairman. Good night, everybody.
Night. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. Good night.
In comparing these five different cities, we've seen that military banner programs are coordinated internally by city staff, ranging from staff in the community services, or of course, our regional department, as well as the city manager's office staff.
Great, Council. I appreciate your work on, um, finding out the information and providing that to us. Um, I, I don't have any other further questions on this side of my, I hope that we do follow through on the items that are in the report that, um, are recognized as meaningful and something we can go with. But, um, what's important today is to receive the files. So I have a big motion to receive the files on, um, update.
Thank you.
All right.
Mr. Mayor, this is Councilwoman Benialosa, and I have just a point of comment.
Yeah.
Yes, I know. Thank you. Uh, if you want anything, uh, staff and, uh, you know, there's a lot of different ideas that we can do. Like, a lot of the ones I listed, uh, just last night, I was walking, uh, Jack's, you know, that's a camp, maybe, don't mention it, Memorial Park. And, uh, I, I stopped to look at the flagpole. There is a flagpole right below the flagpole that is, I believe, was from nineteen fifty-eight, that is in, you know, memory of, of being those who served in the military and gave the ultimate sacrifice. So, um, given that we have a park that's named Memorial Park, uh, after, you know, for that reason, you know, there was a lot of areas in our city, you know, that were, were actively, you know, pursuing, uh, funds and grants for, for a potential, uh, new community center in Memorial Park. Uh, I think it's important that we collaborate with our parks and rec, with our public works, because there's, there's, um, areas throughout the city of, of upcoming future projects where we can incorporate a lot of the, the recognitions, uh, for, for our, our, uh, veterans, those still living, and then those who gave the ultimate sacrifice. So with that said, very happy with this, that this has been for us. And thank you, Seth.
Any other comments?
Councilmember Becerra?
Yeah.
Councilmember Mendoza?
Yeah.
Councilmember Benialosa?
Yes.
Councilmember Sarmiento?
Yeah.
Councilmember Solaria?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Vegas?
Yes.
Mayor Polino?
Yeah.
Shukeris Salazar?
Uh, uh.
Nineteen D, pulled by Councilmember Solaria?
Thank you, uh, thank you, Madam City Mayor. Nineteen D has received a file on the Cannabis Public Benefit Youth Fund. Uh, I think, uh, Lisa and Parks for itemizing the type of ideas of things that we could fund with the youth fund. Things don't happen overnight. Being, uh, publicly employed by some government, it's challenging, particularly during COVID, to even know it's gonna be open, uh, in two weeks, let alone in three months. So I appreciate the diligence of planning as well as the commitment to follow up with the youth commission on getting their ideas and possibly having to type RFP for, uh, other institutions now brought by city districts, including Guarding, uh, and Orange and others, on how we might benefit, uh, the youth, uh, in others in those communities. So I appreciate that. Maybe I'll date them, uh, supporting all these programs. Thank you.
Any other comments?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, this is, uh, Councilmember Sarmiento. Um, yeah, I think, I kind of rattled about this item in the, um, previous presentation at about sixty-five B, when we were discussing, because if all of these parks and grants and youth, how we can better support these services. So I think this major extent, um, that you have this here for the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty carry forward along with the promise twenty twenty-one, um, investment is solid. And I think what I was, I guess what I, what I was trying to, um, explain earlier is that, as we know, these cannabis funds, um, were discussed, um, to make sure that a part of them, and I believe it's a third, go directly towards youth services. And I think that's, that's certainly a wise way to, to spend that one-third. And I believe the other third is for enforcement and the final third went into the general fund. So I don't think, um, again, it gives us an opportunity for us to revisit that allocation, because I know that when we, that when we made that separation of expenses, um, I know that the enforcement for the cannabis was really robust, because we had, I believe, more than a hundred and twenty illegal operators. Now, I know we're down less than twenty or seventeen or something. The number is much, much smaller. So I think it's an opportunity for us to reassess, not completely abandon, but see if that enforcementality still makes sense to invest a third of these cannabis funds into enforcement, when we have a much smaller number of unsecured operators and maybe other enforcement efforts. So to the extent that the U.S. has looked at that and see if we can maybe reduce that amount, that amount to go for additional funding programs and, uh, and youth services. I know, I know, what I, what I don't see is, I know we have, um, uh, shared space with Roosevelt Lockup, where, um, I recall there was going to be, um, a tiered up, um, you know, uh, library that was a brick and mortar library, or that would have terminals, sort of a E library, I believe is what we called it, where, uh, teens could come in, or, you know, youth could come in and use terminals and access information. Many of them may not have those services at their home. But, you know, replicating that in different parts of the city, whether it's, you know, at our other community centers, whether it's at Meli Center, whether it's on some of the campuses across the city, um, so those are things, things that I think we can, you know, develop and enhance, you know, just consider. And that's something that, you know, we staff have to kind of revisit, because this is, uh, after that funding, uh, allocation that was made, to go with third, third, and third, maybe, uh, something to see brought back to us, just for us to assess, uh, what the demands are for enforcement, and obviously what the continuing demands are for youth services. So that's something, um, you know, just to suggest some more staff to consider bringing back to us, revisit. And those are going to be some of the things.
Thank you. Other comments?
Well, I have a, I have a question for the city manager. This is, uh, I'm talking to him. Thank you, uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The city manager, so the, the third, the money that we use for enforcement is not just officers, but it's in code enforcement, correct?
And the city attorney's office.
And the city attorney's office also. So, I mean, what is your opinion? Are we doing that section of this policy? And I mean, you know, yes, I understand that, that the council member was saying that we've had a lot less cannabis, illegal cannabis shops popping up. But, you know, that, that fight continues, that we have to, uh, continue to monitor. And we'll have to listen. We also have the fund for enforcement. We have the, the city attorney's office and for the officers, uh, to, to think out where we're moving with that. What is, what is your opinion?
Mayor, Tim, I would like the opportunity to go back in, and I can reassess it, and then report back to you as to the spending of the one-third dedicated to enforcement, and let you know that if it is still needed to continue with the enforcement efforts despite the rejection of the numbers of illegal shops operating. But I, I don't want to make any guesses off the top of my head.
You never know. Thank you very much. I appreciate that, because you never know. The shop is gonna pop up. And then here we are, we took the money, and they don't have it on hand for us, uh, to, to address that issue. And, you know, they, they seem to pop up here and there, we just never know. So that's, that's my concern. And I'm not into defunding any of the staff work. I just want to make sure that we are able to address, uh, you know, this issue, because it's important for our city. And I thank you for my, uh, thank you for the time, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. So, councilmember, just, just to respond again, um, so nobody's talking about the name of the FFP, I think, uh, I was just, just being personal, where it was just a revisit. And I don't think there's any harm in reevaluating. I don't see that, you know, no decisions are being made, or, you know, gonna come back and look at what the, you know, plan state is. It's much different than what it was a few years ago, when we made this decision. And I think for us to reevaluate how we expend our money, and how we help people, it's a bad thing. We're not making any, any judgments at this point. If anything, we're looking for data, we're looking for information. That's, that's all that I'm sure of.
And that's why I associate managers on looking for information, too.
Gather that data and report back to the full council.
Mr. Mayor, this, this is Councilwoman Benialosa. Just wanted to say that I, that I agree with, with the mayor program. Um, I think you think, I, I don't, uh, participate in, in, uh, uh, my thoughts. I'm listening to you there right now. So I would just, uh, I'm not, I'm just, I just want me to take, uh, a line, uh, and then I'll come back here if I see, uh, there's a problem, like, you know. Uh, please, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That's your vote. Councilmember, uh, Benialosa.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. From Tim, I just wanted to say that I, that I, that I, uh, agree with, uh, my colleague, Councilmember Sarmiento. Uh, all of these things, you know, if we should always be constantly looking at them, um, I think that's why in government, everything's always so slow, is because we, you know, we, we laws are improved, the rights is improved, a lot of they just, you know, they, they, they don't, we don't try, we don't change them when the time is off. And if we should, uh, throughout, you know, throughout history, so I'm supportive of, of those comments. Thank you. That's it.
Thank you. Is there any other councilmembers who have comments? Okay, here now, can we have a, uh, is there a, uh, I have a motion for councilwoman Solario to second by, by myself a second. And, oh, call me, please.
Councilmember Becerra?
Yeah.
Councilmember Mendoza?
Yeah.
Councilmember Benialosa?
Yes.
Councilmember Sarmiento?
Yeah.
Councilmember Solaria?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Vegas?
Yes.
Shukeris Salazar?
Shukeris, Mr. Mayor. Shukeris.
All right, thank you. I have a man of, uh, maybe, uh, word.
Twenty C, pulled by Mayor Potem Vegas?
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to, uh, leave this item a comment. I just want to thank, uh, Director Phil Keef of the Department of Justice, uh, the, uh, Community Orientated Policing Division of the DOJ in Washington DC. I want to thank human staff for, uh, you know, for the, uh, for working with us on this grant. This grant is going to help us hire more officers, I believe, about ten officers, as we were having officers retire. So we want to make sure that we keep our numbers up, so we can, uh, continually, uh, get as many as we can for the rest of San Diego. And I just wanted to take a moment to, uh, to thank that office for their hard work, and, uh, and for working with us here in the city of San Diego. And, uh, I have a motion to approve it. Second.
Second.
Mayor, um, well, I, I just had a quick comment that this mayor, who was the councilmember, sent in. So I know that, um, you know, these, and I think you may recall, uh, these, we used to do a lot of these when, uh, when you were around during the COVID administration. They were called COVID COPs. Um, and the idea was, um, you know, to try to instill a different philosophy in the types of officers that were hired in the way they were trained. And really, they were, uh, they were meant to be more neighborhood, um, law enforcement officers that got to know their, uh, environment, got to establish relationships, build trust with the community. So given that philosophy, I think that's where, um, a lot of law enforcement has started to move to, to try to make sure that, um, you know, officers engage with, uh, with the public that they serve and protect, and they do it in a very, um, respectful, in a very, um, you know, dignified way. And I think that this is, um, one good step, because the officers that will be, uh, retained, uh, for this, um, will be brought in under this philosophy, and hopefully that permeates through the entire department. So, um, you know, that being said, in that context, um, you know, I'm supportive of that as well.
Thank you for the comment, uh, on the comment.
Listen, Mr. Mayor, this is, uh, Councilmember Solario. I'm, uh, very supportive, uh, anything that we can do to keep our police department, our Bernie staff, the ruin is appreciated. And, you know, uh, we did a lot to reduce, uh, valley crimes in town, and some of the smaller crimes, like, uh, property crimes, homelessness, I think, uh, continued work to do there, but this will be helpful with that. Um, this does say one point two five million twenty twenty cops hiring grants. So I want to confirm that we are hiring new officers with this, really more just through filling and vacancies as they come to be, based on attrition. But I want to confirm that this is to, uh, add, uh, the hiring of new officers.
I'm your correct councilmember. If they'll hire authorized, but not funded at this point.
Fantastic. Thank you. Very supportive.
Additional comments, Councilmember Solario? And that, uh, I am very supportive as well, um, with something spoken before, if they really, really have assisted the city over the years. So with that, I will call folks.
Councilmember Becerra?
Yeah.
Councilmember Mendoza?
Yeah.
Councilmember Benialosa?
Yes.
Councilmember Sarmiento?
Yeah.
Councilmember Solaria?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Vegas?
Yes.
Mayor Polino?
Yeah.
Shukeris Salazar?
I have a man of word.
Sixty A.
So we're on item sixty-eight. Uh, let's, uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Councilman Phillips here.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I initially, at the, at the previous meeting on this item, I asked for reconsideration. And before I ask my colleagues to indulge me, I, I think we may be able to, um, I'll have to go through a vote on that consideration. If I can just get a little, um, a couple of my questions answered from staff. So, um, Madam City Attorney, I wanted to ask you specifically on, you know, previous question that I had at, at our meeting, one of my concerns was the indemnification. And the answer given to me was that we had it. And, uh, my understanding was that staff needed to, I guess, further enhance it, or somehow incorporate it into the improvements. Um, one thing that I want to make sure of, though, in this indemnification, is that, you know, in, in, in the development role, there are folks that apply for a project, and they are the ones that are gonna build it. In some cases, the applicant may at some point make a financial decision to sell the project. Nonetheless, I do not want to see this indemnification disappear, because the applicant goes away, and a new, um, project manager, or project, someone that's gonna build the project comes in, and then, um, they, for some reason, are able to escape the indemnification. So what I wanted to ask you, Madam City Attorney, does the language in place before us tonight indemnify not just the applicant for these entitlements, but also any successor, or anybody down the road that should, for, you know, own the property, build the property, whatever their goal, will they also be subject to this indemnification?
Councilmember, yes, I want to mention two things. Currently, what you have is, um, two levels of indemnification. Um, in reference to your previous question, you had asked, um, what type of indemnification the city would have. And I think the response you got from staff was that we had indemnification. In fact, in the appropriate documents, there's a condition of approval, uh, which requires the developer to sign a forenavigation easement providing for indemnification. So the correct answer to your question should admit, we have a condition of approval, and the foreboding permits are being, we'll make sure that indemnification is in place. But given that, we went ahead and went a step further. So in this item that you have tonight, um, along with the, um, second reading, um, we have proposed an indemnification agreement. Um, in that indemnification agreement with air as capital, it is a document that will be reported against the property. Um, and that also provides further that it applies to any, to the current developer, as well as to anyone who purchases the property.
Okay. Thank you, Madam City Attorney. So at this point, uh, the indemnity will run with the land. So it matters whether it's air as capital or subsequent property owner. That indemnity will continue to run from this?
It will. But I would also just like to clarify that you, um, have to remember that indemnification is the obligation to make the city pay. And normally, you also want to make sure that with indemnification, the individuals have insurance or security or the wear permit to do that. So while we do have the indemnification provided for here, um, that indemnification will work for the developers in the future, um, and cover us as long as they have the resources to pay for any potential liability.
Okay. Thank you. So, you know, that, that was really a major speaking point for me, because of the fact that we were voting to hold the airport land use commissions determination. And in order to do that, we need a super majority. And I think that shows, demonstrates how important it was to really, we're going to hold their determination, that we really had our ducks in the row. So, um, Madam City Attorney, thank you for that clarification. I, I personally feel a lot more comfortable with, uh, the path that we were on, um, prior to my, um, request for reconsideration. So, um, at this point, I would be happy, uh, to move forward with the, um, the discussion of the second reading. And I would like to, um, rescind my request for reconsideration of the, um, uh, Airport Land Use Commission, the hopefully airport land use commission's determination. Does that require a second, uh, Madam City Attorney?
Um, the motion to reconsider is on the agenda regardless of whether the councilor rescinds it. You can either take action on it, or accept his request simply on to, to take, um, action on the motion. It's on the agenda.
Do you need to take her that motion, uh, Madam City Attorney? So if you can withdraw it, and I don't even think it's subject to any council action.
Correct.
And it's not subject to this here. I'll accept it as a request of the, of the law. So with that, we have the, uh, uh, just a second reading for us. Uh, we probably do need a vote on that, right?
Yes. So if there's no action on the motion to reconsider, then the, um, staff recommendations to move forward on the second reading of the ordinance and also for, for the indemnification of the unit.
I'll, I'll make a motion to approve the second reading of the ordinance. Second. Second. Okay. Roll call, roll man.
Councilmember Becerra?
Uh, ma- ma- sit again. Can you repeat the, the motions or clearings?
Um, so my understanding is that we're, um, council is approving the second reading of the ordinance. I would also like the staff recommendation, you remember, is to have that second reading and for an indemnification agreement with air as capital, as indicated inside of the, the recommendation on the agenda.
As a maker of motion, I'll, I'll accept that. It's a little motion. That will be second.
Councilmember Becerra?
With those changes, yes.
Councilmember Mendoza?
Yeah.
Councilmember Benialosa?
Yes.
Councilmember Sarmiento?
Yeah.
Councilmember Solaria?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Vegas?
No.
Mayor Polino?
No.
Shukeris five two.
So now we on that side of Madam Councilor?
Sixty B.
Mayor, uh, yeah, I know we already talked about this, this, we, uh, uh, for a taxation program.
The item?
Um, yeah, we, I think, we worked on, we have a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'll, I'll second with comment.
Go ahead.
Actually, if, if I may ask, maker of the motion, one thing that, um, you know, we heard from Mr. Reyes from Saddleback View, who, uh, called in in opposition, because he was finding these needles throughout his community. We saw the same impact over at the, um, civic center in the past. And both of those programs aren't necessarily exchange programs. They're not one for one advice. They're distribution programs. So what I'd ask the maker of the motion, is if you'd be willing to accept that we also add language in there, that not only are we prohibiting, uh, syringe exchange programs, that we also identify syringe distribution programs?
Uh, I'm, I'm in support. I just would like, uh, legal to let us know if we need additional, um, work on the language, uh, to feel comfortable with it, or if there's, uh, cleanness or angst.
Um, what I would recommend is that you have this ordinance before you, clearly mounting an authority created on this ordinance, because it has a safety net in this ordinance. Should we be corrected by state or by the law, my recommendation is that you take action on this, and you give us direction to look into the city's authority to regulate and plan the other needle, not exchange with needle, um, medical syringe.
Right. As well as research, because there might be, there may be other things that we're not capturing yet. So I do like the way that we're going, um, Councilmember Becerra, I just don't know that we could really, um, move them all in correctly today, but I think we could approve this. And I think staff has heard us, that we want them to research other similar problems and come back with, uh, uh, fixes to those. Well, I, and I'll accept that. And I'd rather us be on, on strong, um, legal ground when we report on the item. But I would ask staff to proceed immediately, and we're, I'll report back to us on the inclusion of, uh, distribution programs as well.
Yes. So with this one last comment I'd like to make, is that this really becomes a land use issue. And in, in those areas in the city where you have zoning, and the government pharmacies or medical offices, where those pharmacies or medical offices are providing needles, um, you may not have legal authority to stop them from providing, uh, service. It becomes, and it may just become a land use issue. So we'll look at it, both locals, and regulating those that are providing it, making sure that they do have the proper licenses, and then looking at the ongoing areas of pharmacies and those four. My, uh, my feeling is that if you have some operations that are non-legal pharmacies or legal, uh, medical offices, that we may be able to take other enforcement action against them. But so long as they're protected and, and, uh...
I appreciate that. Thank you, Madam Attorney. So, uh, I'll make, I'll make up the motion. Ju- just for clarification, Mr. Mayor, so this is something that you guys will look at and come back with information for the second reading, or, or as part of the second reading order?
Um, I think it actually may require, to go for some type of issue, may require entirely the ordinance. So we'll look at it and not interfere, because you're already taking good action on this one. Take action on this, and then if we come back and we can regulate, we can look at some ordinance and regulate that.
Okay. And, and, uh, Councilmember, well, I don't want to have this, um, slowed down. So I, I would prefer that staff come back with that, um, my, my request for...